Calling to order, the meeting of Monday, October 26th, 2020 will all rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, in truth and public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call the members, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo. Is absent, Councilor Serena.
Here.
Here, Councilor Viscanti.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Keith.
Here.
Here, poor Ms. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of October 5th, 2020?
So moved.
Madam Clerk and fellow councilors, I know that some of you have heard the terrible news that we've experienced this weekend with the few people that we've lost. I wanted to offer a resolution of condolences to the O'Hara family for the loss of a former, I guess you could call colleague, former city councillor, Ed O'Hara, state trooper, and most importantly, father of seven beautiful daughters, some, one of whom Sergeant Amy O'Hara, who's on the Riviere police force, and Corey, who works downstairs. So at this point, we'd like to offer a resolution for Mr. O'Hara. Whereas former city councillor Ed O'Hara has rendered conspicuous faithful and honorable public service to the citizens of the city of Riviere in his duties as city councillor and as a school committeman. And whereas Almighty God in his infinite wisdom has called former city councillor and school committeman Ed O'Hara to his eternal reward, and whereas the sad calling from our midst of former city councillor and school committeman Ed O'Hara leaves a vacancy in the official family of the city of Riviere that will be difficult to fill and a memory that will long be cherished. Therefore, it be resolved that the members of the Riviere City Council extend to the family of the former city councillor and school committeman O'Hara on behalf of the citizens of Riviere our heartfelt sympathy and sincerest regrets on the profound loss. And it be further resolved that in recognition of the former city councillor and school committeman O'Hara's service to the citizens of the city of Riviere, that the city council pay sincere tribute to his memory by spreading upon the official records of the Riviere City Council a copy of this resolution, signed by the city council, Council President and Clerk Melnick. At this moment in time, could we take a moment of silence? Thank you. And Councilor Guanasso, I know that you have some more tough news for us.
Yes, sorry to say this, Mr. President. Want to tell my colleagues, if they haven't already heard, that past Senator J.C. De Carlo, that's the way this past weekend, a long-serving member of the Senate, is a very distinguished representative from the city of Riviere, one who brought a lot of good service to our community. And I ask that the city council rise in a moment of silence.
Madam Clerk, before we begin the public hearings, I would like to take out of order, if we could, the directors that are in attendance tonight. We have Director of Veteran Services, Mark Silvestri, who has a few items in front of us. And also after Mark, we have Diane Colletta from the Elections Commission to take up an agenda item.
Do you want to take the communication just in order, or Diane first?
Okay, sure. So we can take Diane first, and then Mark, who I believe, is Mark celebrating a birthday? His wife's birthday? Anniversary, happy anniversary, Mark. All right, so Ms. Colletta, we're going to take your item up first. Madam Clerk, would you read the...
Short calendar item number 14, Communication from the Election Commissioner, requesting approval of the warrant for the state election on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020.
Ms. Colletta?
Yes, Senator?
Hi.
You sure are. Go ahead. Can you speak, Diane?
I promoted her to a panelist.
She's muted.
So she's on in two spots, that's why. So Diane, it looks like you're on twice. You on your phone and your...
Yes, and I'm trying to shut the phone off.
Just turn one of them off, please.
I will, I will.
How about you turn the computer off, then?
No, I just turned the phone off, hold on.
Much better, good job.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm here to seek approval for the warrant for the upcoming state election on Tuesday, November 3rd. It's for the office, it's basically an information sheet that tells you the time the polls open, the offices on the ballot, the polling locations that will be, the voters will vote at, et cetera, et cetera. And I basically am seeking approval for that document.
Thank you, Ms. Colletta. Any councilors wishing to speak? So on, all in favor? So ordered. Thank you, Ms. Colletta. Have a great night.
Thank you, sir, I really appreciate it.
And good luck next week on election day. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Calendar item number 15, Communication from the Director of Veteran Services, requesting various memorial poll locations.
Director Silvestri.
Good evening, Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Happy anniversary.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Council, Madam President. It's always an honor to come before you. And it's really an honor to come before you for this reason. We have several era, war, and different veterans of all eras coming before us for memorial polls. I don't know if it would be okay to ask, we have nine, and we usually do five a year. So with COVID, five would put on pause, and we have nine within the last week, and I apologize, Madam Clerk. Saturday morning, we were informed of another World War II veteran, and I'm wondering if we can add that in now or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
The clerk would just need the name, and we can add that to your request.
I'll forward that all to her immediately.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So again, I'm here to pay tribute and memorialize many of our veterans here in the city. In Riviere, we're very fortunate to have the veterans and the honor that we do. And these memorial polls are really special to the families and to the veterans that bestow them. So I'm going to run down quick, because there are many of them. So I am asking approval from the city council for memorial polls at separate locations that will be discussed with myself and the family members when case of the polls going up. The veterans I would like to honor would be PFC George Taro, World War II, highly decorated war veteran. Sergeant Albert Durico, World War II, highly decorated war veteran. Staff Sergeant Red Terenzio, Silver Star recipient, World War II, highly decorated. Bronze Star, Purple Hearts as well, redhead. Sergeant John Griffin. Sergeant Griffin was shot down in Nazi Germany and was actually taken in a survivor of a POW in Berg. So it's actually extra special. His family's really looking forward to this memorial. A survivor of a POW camp is extra special. So I look forward. That's my first POW that I get to put up. So it's an honor. Next, we have Seaman Vincent Camerata, a decorated Navy veteran, World War II. Lieutenant Camerata was a, I apologize. So we have Seaman Vincent F. Camerata, a decorated Navy vet, World War II. We have Sergeant Ronald Corbett, World War II, Normandy, Ryans, some of the greatest battles Ron was in. And we all know Ron was an icon in the city, a longtime attorney. I believe he was the eldest attorney practicing in the state of Massachusetts at one point. Seaman Joseph A. Melinaro, a US Navy, World War II, Asiatic Pacific Theater. Seaman Peter Nunzio De Giulio, US Navy, he was on USS Bane, USS Bridge, USS Columbus. And last but not least, we have Sergeant First Class Ronald Raymond Pop. Ms. McKenna, I think this one will be an extra special one for you. This is actually Susan's grandfather. And he was a highly decorated World War II vet. And surprisingly to the family, they just found all this information out. And it's amazing when you put his DD-214 to the story of the infantry unit he was in. You basically can get a story in itself. So I come before you and ask the Honorable Council to approve these memorial dedications. And I thank you, and greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Director Silvestri. I know that there's a few councilors wishing to speak. Councilor Janino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to speak in favor of this communication, I think, especially in lieu of, you know, being able to participate in the beautiful service that Director Silvestri puts on every year. I think this is a great way to pay tribute to those that we've lost in our community. And I know normally we, you know, do five, as he mentioned, but one of the unfortunate effects of COVID is we have experienced a greater loss. And we've lost, you know, more people than we ordinarily would have. So I think it's very important that we honor these vets. And Mark, thank you for doing everything that you do to make sure that they are honored properly.
Thank you. Council Novoselsky, and then Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, putting these names up is very important to the city Riviere. Everybody knows that I'm an avid veteran fan. And Mark is doing an outstanding job in his position in recognizing these folks. I just don't want him to think, and I know he works hard at it, that we're only committed to five a year. Because here it shows that we have at least 10 here, and there's one more I want to ask him about that I had mentioned. And I think it's important that we put these up. You know, I know it's hard work for DPW guys to put reeds up and little flags every year, and for them to put up the markers every year. But, you know, these folks, you know, guys and gals that were veterans deserve these markers. And it's very important. I just wanted to ask Mark one question, if he's still with us. Peter De Giulio, is that spelled correctly with two U's?
Probably not. It's actually Mr. De Giulio's dad. So I believe I did his spell wrong. I apologize.
I just, I just want to make sure that it doesn't go up wrong.
Oh, no, we, when I bring the signs to the store, they all have DD-214s attached.
Okay. And who's the last one, Raymond who?
Raymond Pop, Sergeant First Class Raymond Pop.
How do you spell that last name?
P-O-P-P.
Oh, okay. And I remember I asked you about John Craig.
Yes. John Craig is also, and I apologize, I did forget also, so John Craig, Jaws Ira, and then Frederick Delicio, who was a fighter pilot and was shot down as well, and who had over hundreds, actually 1,051 flying hours and over 390 flying tours in World War II. I apologize. I will add those to the motion for Madam Clerk.
Yep, perfect. And again, you know, we don't have to wait all year round for a whole bunch. You know, if you wanted to come up during the year and do it, you know, we will be glad to approve any single one that may come up. And whenever you want to put it up, it goes up. Oh, and DPW can do it. And whatever you can work out with the families if they want a ceremony. But this is terrific. I congratulate you and keep up the good work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I know Council McKenna and Councilor Serena and Councilor Zambudo wish to speak. Council McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, Mark, I want to thank you for putting the names forward. I know that there was a delay with the COVID. And I know there's more people that we are honoring than we usually do. But everyone is worth honoring. They all served in different ways for our country. And this is wonderful. With the Pop, Susan Pop was my student. The Pop family is, are my neighbors. I remember Mr. Pop when I was a little girl. So this is a wonderful honor. I also am advocating for Ronald Corbett. I knew his son. I taught with his son. I know his daughter. So this is a wonderful tribute to it. He was a big advocate for the Immaculate Conception, and I think that's where they want his placket. So thank you very much for putting this forward. I really appreciate it. And happy anniversary.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council.
Councilors Zambudo, then Councilor Serena, then Councilor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to congratulate Mark on his anniversary and also say thank you for your service. You do a wonderful job, and we're happy to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Counselor, what's going on? Council Viscanti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, great communication. I'm in favor of it 100%. And, you know, like my fellow colleagues said, if there's anybody else that needs to... to, uh, uh, get recognized, please, uh, bring them up as well. You do a great job. Continue the great work that you do. You're 100% dedicated to the city, and everybody knows it. So, thank you again.
Counsel Serena?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, first, happy anniversary to you and Nikki. And, um, I just want to say thank you for the work that you do in our city and, uh, on behalf of the veterans. I know the veterans and their families truly appreciate all that you do by going above and beyond every day. Um, I, I'd be happy, I hope we do vote on this tonight. And, uh, you know, going through the list, George Taro was, uh, my principal from elementary school's dad and my neighbor's brother. Um, the Taro family's a wonderful family, and I know he, you know, he is a war hero. Uh, Vinnie Camerata is a Ward Six legend. He lived in West Revere almost his entire life. And, uh, again, another proud veteran. Um, Red Terenzio, and, you know, the list goes on. Griffin and everyone. Um, all wonderful people in our community who truly deserve this honor, and I'd be happy, I hope we do vote on it tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. How you doing, Mark? Uh, happy anniversary first and foremost. Uh, personally, I, I think we have probably the, the best Veterans Director in the state. Uh, that's just my opinion. And, uh, you know, I don't blow bouquets quite often, Mark, but you truly deserve it. Uh, anything that you need regarding vets at any time, at any place, uh, I am here to assist you and, uh, vote on it. I trust you fully in those matters. Take care.
Thank you, Counsel.
And Counsel Morbido.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hey, Mark, I hope you can handle one more compliment.
Gotcha.
Um, I just want to share an experience, uh, before I go on to speak about this. Um, I had multiple constituents, vets, who have, um, come to me and expressed their gratitude and, um, their experience dealing with, um, the Veterans Department, um, and you, uh, Mr. Silvestri. Um, one of the most heartfelt feedback I received was that, that there was a vet who was very, very depressed, um, and you gave them a sense of belonging in the community and a sense of community. Um, and you made them, they didn't, they don't have a lot of family, and you really put them first and made them feel like they mattered. And they do matter. Um, anyone who serves our country, um, and puts their life before, um, the good of, for the good of this country, um, deserves the recognition, um, that you put forth before the City Council. So I'm more than honored to vote in favor of this, and, um, thank you for all you do, because honestly, for, to talk to someone and see how much impact you have on them means a lot. You're doing your job. Um, and it's not like you started last year. You, most people, they come in, they, they start off their position strong. They, they come up with all these new ways, how they can develop, um, their department, how they can create, uh, enthusiasm. Each and every year, you continue to excel, and you continue to create new opportunities for vets, and you look for ways of, different ways of helping them. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Counsel Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Every day out there, you hear, uh, comments about, you know, the city of Revere, uh, going back years, family-oriented. Uh, several of these people I knew personally, George Taro, uh, Vinnie Camerata, I, uh, I had the, uh, pleasure of working with him as a, uh, sanitary inspector for the city of Revere. He did a fantastic job. Unbelievable. And, uh, you know, we hear often about, uh, the Greatest Generation. I think, uh, Tom Brokaw, uh, did a book, uh, on the Greatest Generation. I have a copy of it at home, and, uh, you know, uh, this truly was the Greatest Generation, and, uh, uh, I don't think there's any other generation, at least, and that I can remember in my history, uh, that, uh, did so much to, uh, work toward, uh, keeping this country moving in the right direction and defending this country and defending, uh, the flags that stand in back of us in the City Council Chamber. And, uh, I, my, my heart goes out to all of their, uh, parent, uh, relatives that are still alive and remember them, and, uh, and, uh, we do this, it's, it's one of the greatest things in the world we do here in the city of Revere. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. And Counsel Gonasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the honor of submitting George Taro's name. Uh, George was a neighbor of mine. And I think that, uh, when they did the figurine GI Joe, they modeled it after George Taro. He, one tough human being, and, uh, uh, he was a true, uh, strong veteran. You could see that, uh, in, when I had opportunity at the Parvai School, when they have their Veterans Day celebration. It's amazing to see George in all his gear, and his big, uh, with his rifles and all the stuff that is required to defend our country. And Mark, as a, as a note to you, do you believe all that good stuff they went saying about you? Uh, I, I mean, I don't know.
I don't know, Counsel.
I'll tell you, you, you should run for office of some sort, because you've really got some great accolades up here, and I certainly want to add to that, because, uh, every single time I've had the opportunity to request your services, you've been forthwith and very, very, uh, on it. And, uh, it, it's a pleasure to work with you, and I think that, uh, certainly the Veteran Affairs Office is, is encouraged by you, your services being there. So thank you very much for your services, and, uh, congratulations on preparing, uh, for the next Veterans Day, and, and also when we get from Memorial Day for the tribute to all these fallen heroes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. Um, well, I'll wrap it up with saying, there's not much more to say about Mark, and I hope that, um, he's dining outdoor tonight, because his head won't fit through the restaurant doors. No, great job, Mark, and, um, again, five, six, this is the least we can do for the city's veterans and for what they've done for us. So if you come to us with more, I don't think you're gonna have any problems getting them first. Thank you very much, Mark, for putting these through. Counselors, we will, uh, all in favor? This is, uh, all in favor of Mark's request? Aye. So ordered.
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you all, very much so, and you are all right. Um, they all deserve it. Accolades are to the roof. You can't separate any of these men from, uh, their medals or honors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you have one more, uh, communication?
I do.
Calendar item number six. Communication from the Director of Veteran Services requesting that the City Council issue a certificate of appreciation to Olivia's Organics for their ongoing donation of salads to the Veterans Food Bank in addition to their donation of 60 winter jackets to families in need.
Director Silvestri?
Um, I think this motion kind of speaks for itself. Olivia's, uh, Organics is a group that we were honored and, and lucky enough to have them support us for the last three years. Um, they, every month show up with, uh, salads for every veteran in the city that we give out during the food bank. Over 300 salads. Um, and if everyone knows, in, in shops, they're in all your major food stores. So a shout out to Olivia Gardens and Organics. Look for their salads, they're amazing. The group is amazing. They, like I said, they donated 60 winter coats this year. Every year they honor, um, us by donating, uh, a ton of toys to give out to children on Christmas, uh, for the veteran families that need it the most. Um, and I, I think they deserve to be honored for the amount of time and, and effort. And, uh, before COVID hit, they would always send a team with those salads, uh, to work the food bank. So again, I think the motion speaks for itself, um, and thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestri, and, uh, I think the counsel would agree. Hopefully, we can have the, um, present this in person, but if we can't, we can present it over Zoom to this group. But this is a great community partner, and we really appreciate what they do for us. All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
So ordered.
Have a good night.
Good night, Mark.
Return to normal business.
Calendar item number three. Hearing called as ordered on a joint petition submitted by National Grid and Verizon to install one jointly owned pole on North Shore Road, number 3295-1, to accommodate for new services coming online at 177 Shirley Avenue and 1540 North Shore Road.
This is a, a public hearing, so we're gonna ask to hear from any proponents, any proponents in the audience. Is there any from National Grid here?
Yeah.
Is that Moses?
Yes.
Hi, Moses. We're calling to hear from any proponents. Let me see. Moses, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay, name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Moses Okokoro. My, my, I work at National Grid. My address is 170 Medford Street in Malden.
Thank you. You a proponent?
Yep.
Anything specific you'd like to talk about on this project?
Yeah, so basically, National Grid is petitioning to install a jointly owned pole at the property line between 1, 540 North Shore Road and 0 North Shore Road. That's the parking lot. Yeah, that's basically for a new jointly owned pole to install our equipment. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other proponents in the audience wishing to speak? Any proponents? Use the raise hand function. Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents wishing to speak? Feel free to use the raise hand function. Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. And Counselors, Counsel Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, uh, this is directly in my, uh, ward, right around the corner from my home, and, uh, National Grid's using one pole to feed two new locations, uh, at, one on Shirley Ave and one at 1540 North Shore Road. So these are two currently, uh, in process of being built, and, um, I am in favor of this pole being installed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Novoselfsky. Counselors Zambudo?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I think we all read a nice, uh, article about, uh, the new building, buildings on Shirley Ave that was in the Journal this week, and, uh, so that's, one of those buildings is what this pole is for, and I'm certainly a big proponent, as is, is the Ward Counselor, and it's, it's very needed, and it's needed right away. So I hope we can vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils? Hearing and seeing none? Madam Clerk? Roll call, please.
Shall the City Council grant the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon to install one jointly owned pole to accommodate new service at 177 Shirley Ave and 1540 North Shore Road? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gonasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes, please.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serena?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted.
Counsel Powers, Ways and Means Subcommittee report?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ways and Means Committee met at, uh, 4:00 PM this afternoon, and, uh, there were several items that, on the agenda. Two of them, uh, were motions, uh, that, uh, were submitted by Counsel Rotundo. Uh, the first one, uh, would you read the first one?
Calendar item number four, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the city of Revere looks into the feasibility of covering the cost of Narcan with any pharmacy in Revere under the following circumstance: If a patron is requesting Narcan to immediately resuscitate someone who is overdosed.
And that will remain in committee.
Counsel Rotundo wish to speak on that?
Did you want?
Thank, thank you, actually. Um, I'm just, what I would hope is to have, uh, the solicitor ruling on this, if we can get a letter from the solicitor. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the, the meeting today due to a doctor's appointment, but that said, um, that would be helpful.
Thank you. So Counsel Powers, we can keep this in committee, and, uh, we can get that guidance. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, the second one, uh, was a motion by Counsel Zambudo. Would you read the motion, please, Madam Clerk?
Motion presented by Counselor Zambudo that the city clerk be directed to place on the agenda for the next regular meeting on October 26th, the communication dated September 29th, 2020, written in the form of a memo from the mayor relative to the fiscal year 2021 budget concerning the restoration of certain salaries that were reduced during the City Council budget process. Further, that the mayor be directed to justify the authority to make appropriations without approval of the City Council in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, chapters, I'm sorry, Chapter 44, Sections 32 and 33B. The City Council is the appropriating authority, not the mayor.
Counsel Powers?
Mr. President, uh, there was, uh, considerable discussion on this particular, uh, motion, and, uh, it was agreed that, uh, the, uh, we would request the mayor to submit the, the names and titles of the positions, uh, that were restored by himself, and also, uh, information relative to, uh, where the monies were, uh, coming from, uh, to, uh, generate the re- the renewal of these, uh, monies in, in, uh, in the, in those positions. And, uh, that is, it was reported out favorably. So, uh, we'd like to take a vote on that?
So that's, that was the motion?
Was that the, uh, Counsel Powers, was that the same motion?
It's the, it's the Counsel's, yeah. Just, just vote on the motion.
Fair enough. All in favor? Roll, roll call vote?
Yes.
Roll call?
Roll call on Counsel Zambudo's motion? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gonasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serena?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, that motion has been approved. That's Councilor 20-338.
And the, uh, the next one was a, uh, a motion that, uh, was submitted by Counsel Rotundo, and I believe Counsel Rotundo would like to speak on that?
Counsel Rotundo, is this, uh, in regards to the, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes, thank you. So, uh, thank you, Counsel Powers. Actually, I'd like this to be placed on file after speaking to, uh, Kim Hatton, well, excuse me, the mayor, as well as communicating with Kim Hatton. Uh, there is a grand process that, uh, First Congregation is going to go through. Kering Hatton's ministry is part of, uh, the First Congregation, so they're going to be filing and have been filing, uh, through one of the COVID-19, uh, community grant, uh, what do you call it, uh, programs. So Pastor Bogert, uh, men is dealing with that, so I think we can put this on file.
That's fine. Placed on file, Madam Clerk.
Placed on file, all in favor?
Counsel President, there were, uh, through you two, Counsel Powers, there were two motions that were submitted by Counsel Visconti with, do you want to read the motions separately? Yes.
Yeah, please.
The first was that the City Council request a written opinion from the Massachusetts Bureau of Municipal Finance Law on the, in writing, uh, on the legality of certain appropriations relative to salaries made by the mayor in excess of what was approved by the City Council in the FY 2021 budget, without utilizing any of the provisions outlined in Massachusetts' General Laws, Chapter 44, Sections 31, 32, 33A, and 33B.
And Counsel Powers, I believe that was the, uh, what you were formally speaking of?
Yeah, that was an agreement, yes.
So any counsel, uh, roll call on that? Madam Clerk?
Roll call on the motion, Counsel.
Point of information, what was the, uh, opinion from the, uh, committee?
That was, they came out of the committee.
It was, yeah, it was.
Did we ask?
Roll call.
Roll call on the motion, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gonasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
No.
No, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serena?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, that motion has been approved.
Now, there's one more, isn't there? Yeah.
The second motion that was presented by Counselor Visconti in the Ways and Means Subcommittee is as follows: that the mayor request the Director of Finance to provide the city council with a verification of available funds for appropriation and transfer detailing the following: from the accounts or funds containing the federal, state, and local dollars referred to in the mayor's September 29th memo, to the salary accounts that were reduced by the city council during the fiscal year 2021 budget process.
Counselor Powers.
Call, a roll call, please, on this.
Madam Clerk?
Roll call on the motion, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, that motion has been approved.
I was waiting for Counselor Novoselfsky.
Anytime, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, we have the zoning Subcommittee?
It was just, I'm sorry, calendar item number seven. That was also on the Ways and Means Committee report. That was the original communication from the mayor relative to the FY 2021 budget and CARES Act funding.
And that's going to be placed on file. All in favor? Placed on file? It's ordered.
Next up is the zoning Subcommittee report.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. The zoning Subcommittee met earlier this evening. We had one item, was the Gunner Holdings, item 20244. We're in receipt of a letter from the attorney for Gunner Holdings asking to withdraw at our prejudice, and I ask for a roll call vote on that. Please.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Shall the city council grant the petitioner's request to withdraw the special permit application without prejudice? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the request has been granted. Calendar item number nine, we're up to the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee report.
Counselor Morbido.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee met, and we discussed five agenda items in which one item will be voted on by the city council. But before I ask the president to go for a roll call, I just want to go over some of the agenda items. Agenda item 2123, a motion relative to vote by mail elections was placed on file. Motion 2221, an ordinance relative to amending meeting times of governmental bodies. Committee members did suggest amendments, so that will be voted on next meeting, November 9th, soon its amendments are submitted. Next agenda item, 2260, an ordinance amending the establishment of a Human Rights Commission was left in committee for November 9th. Agenda item 2308, a motion relative to implementing a local eviction moratorium. That was sent to the city solicitor for legal advice. And last but not least, motion 2341, which was voted out favorably by the city council, by the city council Subcommittee of Legislative Affairs and Act establishing residency requirements for the offices of mayor, city council, and school committee in the city of Revere. As I said before, it was voted favorably, and when we take this vote, Counsel Serino is recused from this vote because of his legislative capacity at the State House.
Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Roll call on an act establishing residency requirements for the offices of mayor, city council.
Madam Clerk, I do apologize. We have a few residents wishing to speak on this motion. My apologies. I understand that they, they do wish to speak, so we'll grant them some leeway. Mr. Lampadecchio.
Mr. Keith, thank you for the leeway, and thank you, counsel, for your attention tonight on this.
Name and address for the record.
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. Again, I just wanted to express my concern as a former candidate and hopefully as a future candidate. Knowing that the census is taking place and that the city zoning lines will be remapped, should I be remapped into a different zone, I would then be rendered a disparate impact, and that's a legal human resources term. You can look it up. I'm very concerned about this motion moving forward in its current state, and speaking with Counselor Janino, we've kicked around the idea of maybe grandfathering in people that have lived in a certain location for a certain amount of time. I'm not sure that the one-year requirement is an appropriate number. I'm not sure where that number came from. If it came from the state level, then maybe that's more appropriate for the state level and not so much for our city, but I just have some concerns around that, and I was curious if the council had talked about any grandfathering in current candidates that have an open file with the OCPF or anything like that.
Thank you for your concerns. We did bring this up in Subcommittee, and as a matter of fact, I did raise some of that concern. I know that the redistrict, and as everyone knows, the redistricting happens once every 10 years, so the chances are, it could be very unlikely that, the percentages are very low, but it was brought up. So thank you for bringing up your feelings as well. We have one other.
Mr. President, point of information.
State your point.
Thank you. Mr. President, if I'm correct, when redistricting happens, it doesn't take effect until two years from whenever it actually happened. So the people, when they do redistrict, if someone is ineffective like this, the Lampadecchio, he will have the one year in that new, new zone. So it doesn't, like I said, it doesn't, and I know I'm repeating myself, doesn't take effect until the following election, which is two years later. Thank you.
Well, that's a good point. Thank you, counselor. And we have one other resident wishing to speak. Anthony Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anthony Cogliandro, 105 Newman Street. I fall in the same situation as Eric Lampadecchio. My street is split. One side is Ward 3, the other side is Ward 6. And if the lines change, that could bump me out now. I've lived all over this city. You know, I know this city really well, but if the lines change on a street that's split, the person wouldn't be able to run in either ward because of the way that the motion is worded. You know, the census this year could very well change things for a lot of people. So I am definitely an opponent of Section 2. I do agree, however, with the one-year residency requirement for citywide seats.
Thank you, Mr. Cogliandro. It looks like, and again, that was somewhat of my concern, and I, and I did, I do like Counselor Janino's motion, but it looks like through Counselor Novoselfsky's clarification that that wouldn't have, next year's redistricting would not impact you until the following election, which would be 2023. Correct, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Point of information, yeah. So redistricting in Massachusetts won't happen until 2022.
Okay.
Because, because the 2020 census is 2021, so it won't affect the 2021 elections.
So that's, so the point is, is if there was to be a redistrict, it would not affect any elections in 2021, which would be city ward elections.
That's correct.
So that, that concern is now moved. Everyone all right? Okay. Any other, hearing and seeing none others? Madam Clerk? Counselor Janino wish to call the roll?
On an act establishing residency requirements for the offices of mayor, city council, and school committee in the city of Revere. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino is recused. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the act has been approved. Next up is the Public Works Subcommittee report from October 22nd.
Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we had somewhat of a emergency information meeting last Thursday. Thanks to you for requesting it, and it was very informative. All the councilors are far this permit overnight parking situation, and we know there's a lot of tweaks that are going to have to happen over the next six months or so, and we hope that things do work out. We ask people to be patient. We know it affects people that, as far as one sticker per apartment in multifamily buildings, and we will address that. And several other things, we can go into it for another hour, and I don't think we want to do that. So with that, everything was tabled, and we will just move on. The Traffic Commission is meeting this coming Thursday at 4, 3 o'clock, I believe, and a little early, Counselor Serino. And, and we know, we know that they, they're open to suggestions, and if any councillor has any suggestions or wants to throw at them, for them to consider, please do. Don't be afraid to do it. They're open with everything. So that's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for having that meeting on short notice. We appreciate it, and I know other residents as well. Placed on file? All in favor?
Onto motions, calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Novoselfsky that the mayor request the commissioner of the DCR to issue DCR residential parking permits for residents living on DCR roadways and having registered cars in Revere, on Revere Beach Boulevard and Ocean Avenue.
Counselor Novoselfsky, I think we discussed this as well, correct?
Yes, sort of. But just, you know, I put this in knowing that we had to go to another state agency, and I did get a lot of complaints on Ocean Avenue and even in Counselor McKenna's area on, on the Boulevard. There is no parking between 9 and 10, and these folks really have no place to park. Their, their parking lot is small and full, and it's incumbent upon us to request DCR to provide permit parking stickers for our residents that live on these streets. It was noted, I was notified that some of the tickets that DCR has shows that there are permit parking locations in Boston and in Cambridge. So if they have them there, they should have them for us. So I'm encouraging the council to move forward and ask DCR to provide these permit parking stickers for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. As a matter of fact, DCR had a meeting last week, and both the mayor, myself, and Representative Vincent spoke opposed to certain sections of that request. First of all, if any money is collected in the city of Revere, they're not going to stay here. They're going into the DCR general fund, okay? So we're forcing people to live in this city, that live on the Boulevard, that live on Ocean Avenue and other sections, that if they're putting money into the meter, that money is not staying in Revere, as it should. It should stay here for maintenance of the pavilions and other maintenance issues. The other issue is that from Revere Street, on the westerly side of the Boulevard, down to Carey Circle, those are apartment buildings, and many of those buildings, the city council didn't vote for. And many of those buildings were built without adequate parking. I firmly believe that any two-bedroom unit built in the city of Revere should have at least two parking spaces, and further, they should have visitor parking spaces which would accommodate potential visitors to that building. Right now, they're parking on Revere Beach Boulevard, on the northern section, from Revere Street down to Carey Circle. Many of those residents down there require medical treatments of one sort or another during the week or the month, or whenever it might be, and they need those spaces open so that the people that are providing those medical treatments can come down there, service them, and, and have a place to park. Many more have visitors from, they're, most of the people that live down there, a great majority of them, are elderly people, and they have visits from their sons, their daughters, or other relatives. They shouldn't be forced to put money into a parking meter. You want to put parking meters on Revere Beach Boulevard, put them on the easterly side, put them on the water side, just like they do in other places, like Long Sands Beach and Yawk Main. The parking meters there are on the water side. They're not affecting the residents that live up there or the small businesses that operate there. So.
Mr. President, point of order.
State your point.
With all due respect to Counsel Powers, you know, the motion is about permits, not meters.
Well, I think it's, it's all part of the same.
And I think we ought to stick to the motion.
It's all part of the same plot, counsel.
Counsel Powers is wrapping it up. Thank you, counsel.
I am wrapping it up, but it's all part of the same plot.
I don't believe it is.
Well, I know it is. Thank you, Mr. President.
It's not.
Counsel Powers, Counsel McKenna, then Counsel Rotundo. Whenever we talk parking in this council chambers, it goes crazy. Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Counselor Novoselfsky, can I add Winthrop Parkway, Broad Sound Ave, and Revere Beach Parkway to your motion, please? Because those are DCR.
I would say, I would say Winthrop Parkway, not Revere Beach Parkway. Because there's no parking on Revere Beach Parkway.
Right, but there are people that don't have driveways that park on Taft Street, so I was just.
But you can't, but you can't park on the Parkway. It's.
I understand that. I understand that, and they don't.
Why, why should we ask for it?
Because they, the parking ordinance says that these people can park on adjacent streets, and Taft Street is an adjacent street. So they cannot park, they don't have driveways. They need to park on Taft Street, so they need a permit.
So Counsel McKenna, if I can just clarify, you're, you're talking about a city parking program, not the DCR parking.
No, this, Revere Beach Parkway is a DCR-owned park, they can't park there.
Point of order.
Correct, but Counsel, Counselor Novoselfsky is talking about asking the DCR to allocate parking on their roads. You're asking them to allocate it on our roads. That would be more of a Revere request.
The thing is that they can't get a parking sticker from the city.
Right.
Because they want a DCR street, so they need a DCR permit so they can park on an adjacent street like Taft Street.
It, it wouldn't be acknowledged.
Point of personal privilege.
It's a DCR sticker.
Point of personal privilege.
State your point, Counsel Rotundo.
So one of the things I think that we need to do is recognize that both enforcement and utilization will not be conducted by DCR, even if they do have the permit. Perhaps we can ask for some special legislation in order to allow the city of Revere to permit on DCR properties for the purposes of that. More importantly, when you take a look at Revere Beach Parkway, it actually does include Revere citizens throughout Ward 1, as well as in Ward 4, stretching from as far back as the actual Taft Street intersection to as far forward as Borden Street, where Capole is putting in his car wash. So we're talking about well over 150 residents on the Revere Beach Parkway side, not to include the three buildings that sit there adjacent to it that also do park on Revere Beach Boulevard, excuse me, Revere Beach Parkway. So perhaps we could put this in committee and after special legislation and have DCR work with the city of Revere to allow to have a Revere permit there, so that way we can have Revere enforcement and things of that nature, because DCR won't enforce nothing. Thank you.
Right, so, and if I can, Counsel Novoselfsky, I know you're probably going to say exactly what I'm thinking, but I, I agree, and I agree that, you know, Counsel McKenna, what you, you're looking for, but I'm saying that this is something that should be brought up in the Revere Traffic Commission. Exactly. So what I would say is, Counsel, I don't want to change, I don't think Counsel Novoselfsky wants to change his motion because it would have no impact. So if it's addressed with the Revere Traffic Commission, then they could work on the adjacent streets, but getting a Revere Beach, a DCR permit isn't going to allow you to park on Taft Street, no matter what it says.
That's right.
They have no jurisdiction on Taft Street, zero. So.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And I would like to just add Winthrop Parkway and Broad Sound Ave then, and I'll, I'll deal with the Revere Beach Parkway myself.
Surely.
Sounds, so, great. Thank you, Counselor.
As amended.
So, Madam Clerk, as amended. Except for the Parkway.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counselor Novoselfsky that the city council and the traffic commission immediately address the permit parking sections F and G in the section 10 of the Revere city ordinances.
Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we did discuss this at the meeting last week, and section. Yes, we did discuss this at the meeting last week and section F and G were thrown in to it by members of the Traffic Commission. I don't totally agree with it, because I know they're trying to limit the number of cars on the streets in the city, but they're hurting the people that live here by limiting, number one, one sticker per apartments, per multi-unit apartment building. And in some cases, they're saying no stickers at all. I can understand when, under the new rules with the ZBA, that one of the requirements in order to get their variance is that where they have no parking at all, that those folks in those buildings will not be allowed to get permits, residential permits for the streets that they're on or adjacent to. So I'm just looking for the Traffic Commission to hear from the councils, that they work on these two sections and give, give the residents who have paid excise tax in the city the right to get a sticker for the streets that they live on. So, that's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councils? So ordered? All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 19. Motion presented by Councilor Keith that the mayor requests the DPW through the Traffic Commission to mark parking spaces across from Harry Del Russo Stadium. The driveways in this area are being blocked frequently.
I apologize, there's a resident that wished to speak. So, before I talk in this motion, I didn't recognize Ralph DeChico had his hand raised. Mr. DeChico?
That's okay, President Keith. I, I basically just had a question on the, on the, on the parking stickers that they were asking for on Ocean Ave, if that was for the new buildings that were being, that have been built, because I always thought that in the, in the stipulations for those buildings to be built, that parking was not supposed to be allowed on Ocean Ave for those buildings to be gone, and signs were supposed to go up, because I remember from those meetings, and the signs never went up from the corner of Revere Street to Wonderland, that no parking was ever supposed to be allowed there, whether residents or not, and the signs have still never gone up. So there was not supposed to be any parking on Ocean Ave from Revere Street to Wonderland in front of, near those buildings.
You make some good points, Mr. DeChico, and this was something that we brought up at length in the Traffic Commission meeting, or in the, and sorry, Councilor Novoselfsky's subcommittee meeting this prior week, basically talking about, you know, some of the buildings that were built so, so long ago, there really wasn't many discussions on parking, to ones that are built more recently where we've given them parking restrictions and said that you're not going to be allowed to get permit parking. So, this is going to be discussed further in, in the Traffic Commission Subcommittee.
Thank you.
All right? And actually, if you can attend, I think that that would be-
Oh, I'll be there. Yeah, I have to be anyway.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. DeChico.
Mr. President, just a point.
Councilor Novoselfsky.
Thank you. Just through you to Ralph, the city of Revere does not have the authority to make no parking on DCR roadways, but I know DCR is restricting all parking from Revere Street down to Chester Street with DCR employees parking only on the, on the easterly side of Ocean Avenue. So that stops people from parking there, but one of the apartment houses, I believe it's 650, 674, they do not make the people pay for parking, so they are all parking in their facility. And I go by there on a regular basis with 500 Boulevard, Revere Beach, Ocean Ave, I'm sorry, and there are very, very few cars, maybe about 10 cars that are parked there during the day or at night on that side, right around the area of the Drift. So, it hasn't been that bad and, you know, we watch it, so, thank you.
Thank you. And we have one more resident, Mr. Tucker, wishing to speak. Michael Tucker? There we go. Want to promote the panelists, it says.
Hand is up. There we go.
Mr. Tucker?
There he is. You're muted, Michael.
Mr. Michael? Can you hear us? Okay.
I'm muted.
All right, so we're going to move on to the motion on Park Ave, Harry Del Russo Stadium. Oh, you wish to speak? Council Serino? Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to, through you to Councilor Novoselfsky, so with that, with that last motion, would, would you be willing, so, when we're talking about Revere's, the city's parking program, there are, within the ordinance, we obviously include the new apartment buildings on Ocean Ave to not get Revere resident stickers. Would you amend your motion or would you be willing to, to basically say the same thing so that you're asking DCR to provide permits to, you're essentially asking DCR to provide permits to people who live in those buildings where they can't get them in Revere? So is, am I understanding that right? Am I? Yeah, so would you, don't you think it would be fair to exclude the same buildings that were excluded in the city? Because essentially what, what would happen is now everyone who lives in those buildings who weren't granted a city of Revere parking permit would then be granted a DCR parking permit. And especially where no meters would be on Ocean Ave, therefore, everyone in those, all those buildings on Ocean Ave would therefore be able to park on Ocean Ave, you know, all the time. Am I making sense? I, I, you know?
I, I think I know what you mean, if I may, Mr. President. Council Serino, yes, you're right, those folks who got reduced parking by variances are not eligible for Revere permits. So, we can include in this that DCR works with the city of Revere Parking Department and Traffic Department, Traffic Commission to not issue permits to those buildings that got variances for parking.
Thank you.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
And may, may I say one, one sidebar, Mr. President? I doubt if DCR is going to listen to us anyways.
Good, great point. Best point of the night.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Tucker? Mr. Tucker, how you doing?
Exactly what I was, was going to say, Councilor Serino did state, that they got variances and that's part of the variance, that's the reason why they were issued. So I don't believe legally they could now give permits out to those people.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. And, you know, we're just going to, I'm just going to say it again and we'll leave it at that. We talked about this at that subcommittee meeting this week, and we've talked about it in the past, in all the parking plans. You know, we're not going to let people do an end round on, on, on not putting enough parking in their building, getting it paid, their building costs less, they get more units in there, and then we're going to let them circumvent the system. It ain't going to happen. I mean, you know, if, if someone else wants to let it happen, it's not going to be okay by me.
President Keith, President Keith, can I just make one more statement? I was going to bring it in Traffic Commission, it's Ralph DeChico. That when you're saying, when you're saying circumventing, I am getting it on the handicap end.
Pardon me?
I am getting the circumventing, they're trying to circumvent the system, asking for handicap placards now.
Right.
Handicap signs now, sorry for that. So that's how they're trying to also circumvent it.
Sure, there's many different ways and as-
So, I just wanted to make that clear. Sorry for interrupting.
Jim Rose brought it up. He's, for every legitimate concern he's got, in 20 bedrooms. All right, moving on to the motion of Harry Del Russo Stadium. I'm not going to talk parking all night, just not going to happen. We're not, we're not, we'll just stay, we'll just stay here.
I just wanted to wish Michael Tucker a happy birthday today, is his-
We'll talk about birthdays. We'll talk birthdays, okay. On the motion, Council, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, 19, speaks for itself. All in favor? All in favor?
Calendar item number 20. Motion presented by Councilor Novoselfsky that the mayor instruct the Revere Police Department to provide and install pole-mounted solar speed machines on Standish Road near 48 Standish Road for eastbound traffic and on Centennial Avenue for westbound traffic near 15 Centennial Avenue.
Councilor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, ever since they started putting up these, these permanent speed machines, we're all asking for it and, and asking for more. I know we all got a few, but these are two locations. Standish Road is a heavy road that's, when school is in session and even when it's not, cars are speeding down there and we, we have to let them know that they are speeding. And by putting this machine up there, it will let them know. The same thing on Centennial Ave, heading up the top of the hill. People are flying up there, I know they want to give it more gas to get up the hill, but, you know, there's still a limit on what their speed limit should be, so this is a request to the Police Department to have these installed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councils? Council McKenna?
I just wanted to say, thank you, Mr. President. I've been asking for a speed sign for over a year now, when Chief Guido was involved as the chief, and I still haven't gotten one, so I hope I get mine before you get yours, Ira.
Wah 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 wah.
Any other councils? This is going crazy tonight. Okay, all in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 21. Motion presented by Councilor Serino that the mayor respectfully requests the DCR to expand its greening, the greening the gateway cities program in 2021 to include the entire city of Revere. The greening the gateway cities program is designed to reduce household heating and cooling energy use by increasing tree canopy cover in urban residential areas. However, while most of the city is included and residents are eligible to receive trees for their properties, the West Revere neighborhood, which is densely populated and does not have much green space or trees, is not.
Council Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the greening the gateway cities program is a wonderful program, benefits most of the other wards in the city, however, really does not benefit Ward Six. And I have a neighbor on Carlson Ave who, he loves trees and he'd like some more trees for his backyard and, you know, if, if a resident in Beachmont, no offense, Council McKenna, but if a resident on the other side of the city can get one from the state, you know, we're one city, we are an urban community, we're a gateway city, I think the whole community should be included. So this would just ask, have the mayor ask DCR to just extend the boundaries a little bit. Carlson Ave is actually literally one street over from the, you know, where it currently ends. So, I, I doubt DCR, DCR hate, you know, they don't pay attention to us anyway, but, you know, just if we could ask, that would really make the resident feel great. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Serino. Council McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we were asked to have a wish list from the mayor about a year ago or eight months ago, and my second line was 100 trees for Revere. So, and I have talked to Bob O'Brien about that and he's gung ho about it, so maybe the three of us or the four of us could get together and we could do something for Revere because that seems to help the climate warming. So, the trees, everybody's planted trees now. So, I think they're very important in Revere because we're an urban community.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councils?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Hey, Mr. President. Yeah, it's, it's a great idea to put trees up, but I know DCR, again, runs on their own beating drums, which sometimes they don't even have any drums, but I think this is something where the city can implement their own trees rather than going through DCR. I, I'm sure there's funds there that the mayor can find and put up some more trees.
Very good idea, Ira. Very good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. It is a great program. Ward Four benefits from it greatly. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 22. Motion presented by Councilors Serino and Janino that the mayor requests Mastaut to clean up Copeland Circle. Over the past few years, it seems Mastaut utilizes this rotary in our community sporadically as a staging area with piles of dirt and parking for heavy equipment. Copeland Circle is one of the first locations people see entering our city from points north and as such, this blight is unacceptable, especially for people who live in Ward Six and drive by it every day. It's noted that Councilor Zamburu is recused from discussion on this matter.
Councilor Serino?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Revere often gets the crap end of the stick, I hate to put it that way, but, you know, Copeland Circle, obviously you come off Route One, it's the first thing you see, and for the past few years now, Mastaut has tended to use it kind of as a staging area for the Route One project that, you know, would be nice if we could get sound barriers for that, but, you know, they, they use, they use Copeland Circle as a, as a staging area, they have heavy equipment. I have a photo here, I don't know, Andrew, can you, from Revere TV, you might be able to see it. Um, there we go. Okay. So, that, that was taken yesterday morning and there's, you know, there's heavy equipment. Up until last spring, there were a lot of dirt piles. It was disgusting. And, you know, Mastaut, I do have to thank them because earlier this year, they did take care of it, and what happens is, is this seems to be a reoccurring problem. Every few months, you know, it'll, you know, stuff will disappear, we respectfully ask Mastaut, they clean it up, and then it's gone for a few months, and then out of, you know, out of nowhere, the heavy equipment is back and it's, you know, it's a mess, it's a blight in our city. So, again, I've asked Mastaut before and they've, they've taken care of it, but I think a letter from the mayor and the administration would, you know, carry a little more weight and, and try to permanently clean it up. And at the very least, if, you know, if we're going to use it as a staging area, there should at least be some mitigation, because it's been years. We're not talking a short-term project, it's, it's been years. So, thank you, Mr. President, if we could, and I think Council Janino might want to add something too, but-
Thank you. Council Janino?
Council Serino, you took the words out of my mouth. Speaks for itself.
Council Rotendo?
Thank you. And Council Serino, this has been like decades, quite frankly, we're like the redheaded stepchild. And I, I can't begin to, you know, you're all laughing about the redheaded stepchild? You're like, I'm not saying anything else. Isn't that right, Jerry? I love you, Jerry. I just want to let you know that, I love you. Anyway, that said, in all sincerity, the issue is, is that we need mitigation. We are environmentally impacted by sound as well as, obviously, emissions. When you go to other communities up as far as Chelmsford or for that far as west as Newton, they have barriers and sound barriers and so forth, and the city of Revere gets trucks and dumped on, like I said, like a redheaded stepchild. So that said, through you, Mr. President, to the learned councillor to my left, Councilor Serino, aide Serino, if you could have the state do their very best and, you know, probably find legislation for us, Council Janino, so that we get barriers, that would be the mitigation that I'd be looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Serino?
Mr. President, as you may be aware as well, Mr. President, thanks to Representative Vincent and Speaker DeLeo, earlier this year in the Transportation Bond Bill, the House of Representatives did include money for sound barriers for Revere along Route One. That bill is currently in conference committee and our state senator, Joe Boncorie, is the lead senate conferee on that, so perhaps, you know, if we could put a good wording to Senator Boncorie to, to fight for that, that earmark in that bond bill, and then, and then we would just have to push the governor and we could, you know, we could maybe make something happen, so.
Right.
Thank you.
And I have emailed, I have reached out and spoken to Senator Boncorie and some of our constituents and just letting them know, the more responses he gets from Revere residents in regards to wanting sound barriers, again, we may never get it, but we can, we can ask, we can keep asking. Council Rotendo?
Thank you. Mr. President, if we could have, through the clerk, either email, and I'll send an email as well, to the mayor requesting Senator Boncorie to forward this issue, which I know he's doing. Clearly, this is a benefit that our entire community would actually embrace and be thankful for, and thank you for the edification, Council Serino. That said, I'm sure the mayor, who has a very good relationship with the governor, as well as our state legislators, would be the best conduit at this point, so, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 23. Motion presented by Councilor Serino that the mayor, when feasible, acquire two solar speed readers to be placed on Washington Avenue, one in the northerly direction opposite Amelia Place and one in the southerly direction in the vicinity of Washington Avenue and Bruno Street. Twice in a year, motor vehicles significantly damage property in the 450, 500 block of Washington Ave due to accidents caused by excessive speed. This would help to curb speeding in the area.
Council Serino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this motion speaks for itself. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councils? All in favor? And we want to- And we want to make sure that Counsel McKenna gets hers first. So ordered.
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by Counsel McKenna, that the mayor direct the city engineer to designate parcel ID 3-39-4 Crest Avenue as number 29 Crest Avenue, Unit 1 and Unit 2.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel McKenna.
Before I beat you to the punch, I know it, tonight, I don't know what it is. I'm drinking too much water. This speaks for itself. So, thank you.
All in favor? So ordered.
Mr. President, motion to suspend rules in order for this.
Let's approve it first. So ordered.
Motion to suspend rules in order so that reconsideration will prove.
All in favor of reconsideration, so in hopes it does not prevail? So ordered.
Calendar item number 25, motion presented by Counsel Zambudo, in ordinance further amending zoning, that the following be ordered to a public hearing, in ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the City of Revere relative to kennels. Section 1, Title 17, Chapter 1716, Section 1716 205A, kennel is hereby amended by continuing the sentence after the word "district" and inserting in place, except when a kennel in residential use or residential district is separated by a highway.
Counsel Zambudo?
This is just asking to go to a public hearing.
Right, okay, so this is going to be referred to a public hearing on November 23rd, 2020? All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 26, this is a late communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of N and M Excavating as a licensed drain layer.
Refer this to appointment Subcommittee on 11/9 at 5:45 PM. All in favor? So ordered. Then we have two more communications, one, Counsel Serena, one of the state, a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick point of personal privilege, I know we're getting past Counselor Gonasso's bedtime, so I'll make it quick.
I kind of think he has a platform here, and he doesn't want to leave this chamber. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to bring a doggy bag next week and make sure he has food, he could stay overnight.
I just wanted to take a quick opportunity to wish our colleague, Counsel Janino, a very happy birthday. She'll, I won't say how old she'll be turning, a lot younger than most of you guys, but her birthday is later this week, so happy birthday, Jess.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, guys, that was sweet.
And we have Counsel Janino had another point.
Yes.
To bring up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the counsel, I would like to take a moment to congratulate someone who's been very dear to the City Council on their retirement, Debbie Sheehan, who's worked for the City of Revere for many, many years, and she will be retiring, so we will all miss her face in the clerk's office, we all know how much she does for Madam Clerk, as well as us and the council, so Debbie, thank you for everything that you do for us. Congratulations on your retirement, and I hope that you really get to enjoy the holiday season with your family and the years to come.
She's too young to retire.
She said she knows that. Yeah, God bless. We, just before everyone heads out into the residents of Revere, we are going to have our next meeting on November 9th, but before that, is a very important day, November 3rd is Election Day. No matter who you vote for, we just want you to get out and vote, have your voice be heard, there is still early voting at the St. Anthony's Church, and then make sure you check on the Revere website, some of your polling locations may have changed, to make sure that you take care of that, and get out and vote. We really appreciate it. Thank you, have a great night, God bless. Motion to adjourn.